Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township Lacy Caucus Meeting, November 10th, 2022. Admitted notice this meeting has been given in accordance with Public -- Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon. It was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with a salute to the flag.
My pleasure. Here's the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, proclamation for Harold Mathis Jr. Okay, this might take a while. Whereas the Lacy Soccer Club was formed in 1972 by a group of community-minded individuals, and whereas Harold Mathis Jr. got involved with soccer through his brother-in-law, Paul McDonald, and became an assistant coach for his son's teams, the Berkeley Tigers and the Atlantic Soccer Club. And whereas after two years with Berkeley, Harold moved to Lacy, where he and Paul McDonald put together the beginnings of the Lacy Soccer Club. And whereas on January 27th, 1972, Harold Mathis Jr., President Fred Glatz, Vice President, Robert Greby, Treasurer, Jim Connolly, Secretary, and Wayne Quinn came together and agreed that they would organize a raise money to start the Lacy Soccer Club end, whereas Harold and his board went to work getting sponsorships for the Lacy Soccer Club from local businesses and relied heavily on fundraising through local bake sales and fundraising cans to keep the club going end, whereas the orange uniforms for the teams were heavily influenced by the Holland-Dutch World Cup 1972 team featuring the late, great Johan Kriek and the new Gatorade drink brought in for his players. And whereas Harold Mathis Jr. worked with and trained referees to take the official FIFA test, holding classes at the municipal building end, whereas in the beginning, there were three teams in the Pee Wee Division, the Road Runners, the Wildcats, and the Demons. The novice division of older players had one team named the Chargers end, whereas Harold coached both the Pee Wee Road Runners and the novice Chargers. And whereas in order to encourage new participants in the newly-formed Lacy Soccer Club, it was required that each player played at least one half so that the parents had the opportunity to watch their child learn and thrive in the sport. And whereas in 1972, the player's fee for registration was $4 per player, and if shoes were needed, they would figure something out. And whereas Harold Mathis Jr., the Lacy Soccer Board, and the township officials came together and decided to utilize the outfield's at the Forkett Elementary School for the Lacy Soccer Club soccer games end, whereas Harold Mathis Jr., a professional surveyor, surveyed and worked out the first field with the help of Robert Greby at the Forkett River Elementary School. And whereas all approvals for the use of the new field were completed on June 19th, 1972, and coordinated with Mayor Bill Mason and Principal Mitchell. And whereas on September 9th, 1972, the Lacy Soccer Club officially opened its 1972 outdoor season and was in District Five of the six divisions of the New Jersey State Youth Soccer Association affiliated with USSF and FIFA. And whereas the ceremonial first kick was made by township community man Bill Mason and the playing of the National Anthem and the flag being held by Jim Mathis, flanked by teammates Paul Glatz and Teddy Greby. And whereas the Lacy Road Runners defeated the Lacy Demon 7-3 to the Lacy Soccer Club's first game, the Berkeley Zebras defeated the Lacy Wildcats 1-0, and the novice division Lacy Chargers were defeated by the Berkeley Cougars 4-3. Whereas the citizens of Lacy desire to recognize, honor, and express their pride and appreciation to Harold Mathis Jr. for the numerous community contributions and commitments to the Lacy Township, to Township of Lacy as leader in the service, dedication, and commitment to our local youth and citizens. Now therefore, I, Mark Dykoff, Mayor of the Township of Lacy, do on behalf of myself and the township committee hereby express our gratitude and thanks to Harold Mathis Jr. for his dedicated service to the youth of Lacy Township.
Why don't we go in the middle, Steve? Get some pictures, right in the middle. So I gather you guys kept this as a surprise to him?
He had no idea.
Yeah, I can tell by the look on his face, he had no idea.
No idea. No idea. Good.
If he's coming to look up water or talk about a curve.
I have to say, in some of the news articles that the family provided, what I found interesting when they were talking about creating the soccer club and using what's the multipurpose room downstairs in the community hall, I mean, in the municipal building, it was the newly municipal building that they said in the news articles back in 1972.
Oh, yeah. That's right. That's right. It is pretty good.
Did you want to say something? Okay, very good. Okay. Okay.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Mathis?
Did you want to say anything?
Thank you.
I actually remember playing on those fields behind.
So do I. So do I. I was on the Polywogs team. That was the name of my team, the Polywogs.
Yeah, I think I was like.
Yes.
I think I was seven, about seven years old.
I was the Polywogs.
Okay. Item number two, proclamation for National Homeless Children and Youth Awareness Month. Whereas every month, every year, more than 2.5 million kids in America will face a period of homelessness. And whereas youth homelessness is mostly common as a result of lack of affordable housing, family conflict, economic circumstances, racial gaps, mental health issues, and substantive root abuse problems. And whereas children and young adults who experience homelessness are 87% more likely to drop out of school, while those who stay in school oftentimes fall behind, fall asleep in class, and experience increased anxiety and depression, lack of focus, and decreased general health. Whereas along with losing their home, community, and friends, and routines, as well as their sense of stability and safety, many homeless youths are also victims of trauma while trying to survive on the streets. Youth are exposed to countless dangers with an increased likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, impulsivity, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and a vulnerability to being trafficked. And whereas to get out of homelessness, youth need housing and support, including short and long-term housing, rapid rehousing, and reunification with their families. And whereas a roof over their head and a good night's sleep. Okay. Good night's sleep. Therefore, child reduces depression and anxiety, helps them focus and do better in school, and improves their immune system and general health. Therefore, be resolved by the Mayor and Township Committee of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State, New Jersey, that Lacy Township does hereby proclaim November as National Homeless Children and Youth Awareness Month in Lacy Township and formally recognizes family promise of Southern Ocean County for the work they do to help fight family and youth homelessness and provide a safe space for those in need. Jim Lowney? Come on. Item number three, Holtek Quarterly Debate, Mr. Dossel.
Quarterly debate?
Quarterly update.
We're debating this? Wow, Jeff.
Good evening. Congratulations. Everything worked out. So, we've been moving along well.
Jeff, can you just move up closer to the microphone, please?
We've been moving along very well at the site. Continuing demolition, continuing with the reactor vessel internals. We'll complete with reactor vessel internal segmentation and removal by the end of this year, so that as well ahead of our schedule. We've taken down about 54 structures at the site. We're working on our new railways building, and then we'll move to the two largest structures, the turbine and the reactor building. So we're about three years ahead of schedule for the demolition buildings and getting it done. And one of the things I want to point out is that we've taken over 17 million pounds of waste off of that site. But the whole thing is, we've recycled and reprocessed about 25% of it. So we're not just looking to rip and ship and bury the waste. We're looking to make sure we recycle wherever we can. So with the 25%, my goal is to get to 40% over the next two years as we get into the process. Everything else, the fuel pool, we've emptied out the fuel pool. The last remaining portions of that are coming out. At that point, we'll put the fuel pool gates in, and then we'll start working and cleaning out the cavity and the reactor vessel side. And that's the point where we'll be draining down to the torches. Along with what we're doing, we still are committed to Lacy Township, and we will continue to fund where we can and provide funds as we can. So this year, we're just shy of $40,000 that we've given out to local charities and township and everything else.
Thanks.
And this is for a banner, so hang on up. And what we're doing is giving a donation to each one of the first responders because we value them so much. Lacy Food Bank is one of our favorites. We continue to donate to them. We're also doing a food drive between Thanksgiving and Christmas when it gets hard. Any questions?
Yes. You say you're about three years ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
So how long is it going to take to take those last two big buildings down? How long do you think it'll take?
I believe it's going to take another five years.
Another five.
Yeah.
So you're going to be done around 2028?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Random repairs.
Injuries, accidents down there, what's happened with that? Haven't seen anything in the papers lately, so I'm always.
No, severe has been first aid. We just had a first aid this week, and when I talk about first aids, it's a minor abrasion on a finger, cleaned, abandoned arm. As soon as you clean it, it comes a first aid, and that's a bumped heads, things like that. I just put out a safety message, going over all our first aids, and basically going with that and making sure that we learn from it, so we don't have the same problems.
Jeff, could you tell our residents your title, your education, how long you've been there?
I'm sorry?
Could you tell our residents your title, your education, how long you've been there at the point?
Title, title, and how long you've been there?
My name is Jeff Dossel. Paul Eric Jeffrey Michael Dossel.
Wow, that's a big name.
I grew up in New York City and went to Maritime College. Got a degree in nuclear engineering and marine engineering.
Jeff, just close to the mic or lift it up, so.
All right.
Yeah, it's not picking.
I have a degree in nuclear engineering and marine engineering. Went to Maritime College, and my idea was to work my way southwest. I ended up in Lacy, and I expected to be here two years. I fell in love with Lacy and been here for 40, so really do love it.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? As always, thank you for your generosity, and we look forward to working with you as things go forward. Thank you. Okay. Item number four, best practices checklist.
Annually, the CFO and the municipal clerk are required to submit best practices inventory. It is about 50 or 60 questions that are, that come from the state of New Jersey that we need to answer with regards to various categories, shared services, health benefits, contractual matters, budgetary matters, assessment matters, and all those items, I am required to submit it to the governing body, which you've all received a copy of. For you guys to just look at it, it's already been submitted to the state of New Jersey. It needed to be submitted by today. We submitted it actually, I think, like October 12th. So I just needed to put it on the agenda and have you guys acknowledge that it was accepted.
Any add-ons?
I have no add-ons here.
I have one.
Oh, Steve.
Uh-oh. Did he get an add-on?
No, every couple minutes, Veronica, I did this. It goes to low sound levels.
I, I don't know what's going on, but it's picking it up. It's picking it up.
Only because he's, well, whatever. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's my add-on.
All right, so we motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Would anybody like to leave as we're taking a break between our meetings?
Oh, yes. You can all leave unless you want to stay around for the really exciting township meeting agenda. Where we pay our bills and.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I'm glad it was a surprise. Good night.
Good night.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, please. Thank you, Barry.
Admitted notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon. It was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
My pleasure. Here's the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading ordinance 2022-39, amending Chapter 93 so as to amend the section entitled Employment of Off-Duty Police Officers.
In accordance with Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 93 of the Township Code entitled Police Department so as to amend Section 93-15, item C, entitled Employment of Off-Duty Police Officers. When we refer to off-duty police officers, we're talking about the contractor services jobs. So you have Gray Supply putting in new gas pipes throughout the town. They have to pay for the use of our police officers. So we are going to a new electronic system. We manage it currently all in-house, so there's administrative fees that we charge, gas, insurance, those kind of items, wear and tear on the car, and then the clerical help. Well, now we're going to an electronic system where most of it will be done via cell phones and so on and so forth. So that was a 33% markup. Now we are marking that down to a 25% markup because we won't have the component of the clerical unit doing that. But I have to update the code book. Motion on first reading?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number two, first reading ordinance 2022-40, amending Chapter 335 so as to revise the permitted density and bulk requirements in various zones.
In accordance with Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Zoning so as to revise the permitted density and bulk requirements in various business, commercial, and multifamily inclusionary zones. This is going to be in various, the C-150 highway business zone, the C-200 limited business zone, the C-100 marine commercial zone, the multifamily inclusionary district overlay zone, and we are, for Section 1 and Section 2, the maximum density will be permitted in those zones shall be eight units per gross acre. This is first reading. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number three, Resolution 2022-303, appointing a municipal 911 coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, appointing George Restatar as the municipal 911 coordinator for the Township of Lacy. The Ocean County Sheriff's Department requires a point person for the 911 coordinator. So basically what that is, is when you add new streets, you add new addresses, they have to coordinate that with telecommunications at the county, and we're switching it up from Lieutenant Sullivan to Sergeant Restatar.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2022-304, authorizing to receipt a bid for the installation of a traffic light.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing to receive a bids for the traffic light installation at Lake Barnica Drive and Hayne Street. So sometime late this winter, December, possibly January, we will be going out to bid for the Lake Barnica Drive traffic light. We are hoping to be able to, as soon as my annual debt and financial statements are due in 2023, we will be most likely opening the bids and awarding the bids if we can do a special bond ordinance for that, because it is 20-plus weeks to get the equipment.
Wow.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution 2022-305, authorizing the township to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the township of Lacy into, entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the lead agency, County of Somerset, for the purchase of work materials and supplies pursuant to NJSA 4811-115. This is just us joining another cooperative. They offer some additional savings on various products that we may order, so we'd like to have, be able to shop around and possibly get things at a cheaper price.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2022-306, authorizing the acceptance of a sub-grant award for the federal fiscal year 2022.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the acceptance of a sub-grant award of the federal fiscal year 2022 of emergency management performance grant and emergency management agency assistance. Again, this is in the amount of $10,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2022-310, selecting a P3 partnership.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, designating a public-private partnership entity developer for a proposed new municipal complex and recreation facility. Okay, we are not committed to spending a dime of money at this point. In order for us to move to the next phase, we need to appoint a partner. So back in August, we had, well, actually, back in 2021, we had received, no, actually 2020, we received an unsolicited proposal from a P3 individual, Johnson Controls Industries. Based on the unsolicited proposal, we were required to make an advertisement and open it up for any other proposals to come through. So that was done in August of 2021. Those proposals were due January of 2022. We did receive a second proposal. We held a special meeting to interview both of those teams on August 31st of 2022. It was done in executive session since it is a matter of property, real estate, and possible litigation. And Johnson Controls Industry and AST Development were the two applicants. After that, the governing body and the team that we have developed with management and department heads here rated those applications, and we have determined at this time that the best partner for the Township of Lacy to possibly look at these goals is Johnson Control Industries. So at this point, what we're going to do is we will be sitting down with them and developing an agreement and obviously specing out building types, the sizes we want, so on and so forth, so we can assess a number to this, to say, is this something that the Township of Lacy can afford? If the answer is no, no harm done. We all walk away, we shake hands. If the answer is yes, then there's an application that has to get made to the local finance board in Trenton. From there, it is up to a nine-month process that Trenton has to review this to determine, are the residents of Lacy Township secure with what the governing body is doing? We do not want to get them in any financial harm where we would all go broke, so they have the final say in whether or not the township is fiscally secure to be able to move forward with this project. And again, it's for an indoor recreation facility and a municipal complex, which will compromise all of our buildings under one roof, including the police department and community development. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Stay.
And Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2022-307, authorizing the refund of deposit money.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2022-308, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $10,306,871.61.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I'll stay on D0400.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff?
Yes. Item number 10, monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $3,794.60. Road opening permits for the month of October were in the amount of $9,405. Recycling commodity for the month of October was $1,157.20. Truck parking in the month of October was $675. Community development for the month of October was in the amount of $66,096. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved township meeting minutes of October 27, 2022.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
Just me. Thank you.
I have no add-ons.
Okay. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, comments were brief, short. Congratulate Mr. Kennas, Mr. Kuratolo, Mrs. Giuliano on their, on their election. Well-run, well-deserved. I'd like to congratulate all the candidates who put their name out on there. It's not easy to get out there and ask people to vote for you, so I'd like to congratulate them. Another thing I'd like to congratulate, the people of Lacy Township for getting out the vote. Really great turnout, when I count the numbers. There wasn't like, I refer to as jazz at the top of the ticket. There wasn't a governor, there wasn't a president or anything like that to really excite the ticket, but our residents turned out and voted for the candidates who they chose, and it's a good job. Man, it's all that.
Thank you, Mr. Kuratolo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first start out by remembering our veterans tomorrow. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, we have 11:11 at 11:00 a.m. We eulogize and remember those veterans right out in front of our building here to the left. If you can make it, it's always a touching ceremony because we care about the veterans. We have a lot of them in our town, and a lot of them are seniors, so it's a very.
Bless you.
It's a very easy thing to do if you have the time to remember the veterans. I want to, in that same line, recognize the efforts of our 9th District. Senator Connor sits on the Military Affairs Committee for the Senate. On that website, some of us around our town and around the district, we're all on periodically a newsletter that comes out from the 9th. There is a plethora of information for veterans and seniors on there. Get an opportunity, see it, easy things to apply for, to help out financially and otherwise, so commend them for that. And in line with what Deputy Mayor McDonald said, it's not easy to run. I want to commend everybody, but it's humbling to see 6,000 to 7,000 people come out and vote for, bless you. Sneeze on the truth. We're good, good running mate and friends, Committee Woman Giuliano, and of course, my brother over here, Stephen Kennas, just great, great people. And it's humbling. 6,000 people's an awful lot for no top of the ticket. So to everyone, the teachers, the students, the seniors, moms and dads, I'm humbled. Thank you very much. And congratulations to all of you in the audience and those that aren't in the audience that ran. You all deserve to be applauded.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to second all this stuff. I just want to thank the citizens of Lacy for coming out to vote and for their confidence in myself, Peter, and Peggy Sue, and it's really a reflection of the entire committee, Veronica included, and our professionals. It's a total team effort. We will continue working to keep Lacy one of the most efficient and well-managed townships in the county and a great place to live. Thank you again for your support. And lastly, and most important, please think of our veterans tomorrow and for the sacrifices they have made in our country.
Okay. So a couple of things. Number one, if anyone doesn't know, today is the birthday of the U.S. Marine Corps. Happy 247th birthday to them.
About 100 yards in Philadelphia.
And segue into, remember our veterans, of course, tomorrow. We will have our rain or shine, we'll have our ceremony out back. Thank you, Holtek, for coming in and updating us. They've been very good at communicating. They, they always give to the township, and we hope to see them give more. Congratulations to the candidates up here. Look forward to working with all of you for another, you and Mr. Kennis and Mr. Curatolo for three years, and then Mrs. Giuliano will run again next year, but I'm confident that she will be successful as well. Along the lines of, of the election, the interesting part, and I want to thank Administrator Loray and her staff for running a great campaign or a great election day in this town. Of course, you, you watch the news and you, and actually, it's interesting, you know, I follow not just Ocean County, and you know, national politics are, you know, listen, they are what they are, but I have interest in other counties and other townships throughout New Jersey. And without exception, our township and our county are right on top of getting the information. It's kind of nice to know that. You can, and especially being the polls close at eight, and I want to be home by nine, it's really nice to, you know, get home early. And with that, I'll open the floor to public comment. Name and address, please.
Melody Pryor, sixteen nineteen, Mid Combro. First of all, I want to thank all our veterans for tomorrow and every day, for everything that they do. I'll be there tomorrow. I hope everybody can turn out tomorrow. I've been trying to tell everybody, turn out, pay your respects, it's very important. Also, I'm really amazed at the amount of people that turned out to vote yesterday. That was like presidential. It was outstanding, and I'm very excited. And with that, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kennis, Mrs. Giuliano, and Mr. Curatolo for your reelection. And also for Mrs. Amato and Mr. Conti on their win to the Board of Election. They ran a great, great campaign, and look forward to see what unfolds. Okay, I only have two topics to mention this meeting, and I don't think this is on, so it doesn't matter, my voice carries.
No, speaking, it's, it's being recorded in the back room, so that's why it's, it's really there.
I have only two topics to mention this meeting. As I've mentioned in a previous meeting, that I and many hold a deep concern for the safety of reflective markings on Newark Avenue. There is no need for large expense. All we really need to, I mean, all we, there's no need to, for large expense, to secure the safety of drivers and the safety in properties and homes of the people who live on Newark Avenue. There's so much traffic going through there now, and it's, you know, there's turns and there's bends, and when that road is wet, when there is ice, when there's whatever, you got lift drivers, they don't know it, they're, if we can slow it down, if we can please, and we don't even have to erect any new poles, we can just put reflective tape on trees, it wouldn't cost us anything, all by the reflective tape.
It's not necessarily proper in the manual and uniform traffic control devices. You have to follow rules.
I understand that.
You just can't put it on a tree.
I understand that, but whatever it takes, I, I don't know, because I personally, you know, that's why I'm bringing it up to you. But please, whatever needs to be done, please.
Do you know we get not one complaint about Newark Avenue? I get complaints about all the streets here.
But look, and how do people come to a meeting?
I know, but there's a phone call, that they can make a phone call.
Loray.
Yeah, we don't, we don't. I get a lot of complaints about Newark Avenue. I get complaints about Manchester, Lake Barnegat Drive.
Nobody shows.
No, there's a phone that they can call the office, this is what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah, no, they can call the office, and we do address them.
And they can email, I understand.
We do address them.
But people are intimidated to call. They are, sometimes they are.
Okay.
Anyway, that, that being said, that being said, people are intimidated to call.
Okay.
That being said, um, okay, and one more thing. There's a, first of all, thank you, committee members, for taking the citizens' concerns seriously. Speaking with and obtaining, well, I obtained some signatures, but it doesn't matter at this point. It consumes a amount of time, energy, on behalf of those collecting signatures and those who sign a form, to take time to understand why they're signing a form. Anyway, the concern is Lake, Lake Side Drive South. I understand they're doing a lot of work. I understand there's, on both sides, I understand. The concern, you know, we all understand the necessity of improving infrastructure. However, many of the township taxpayers who once enjoyed driving on Lake Side Drive South can no longer do so. Since the pipe slash water lines have been laid in the areas on both sides of the street, there are have, there are left significantly uneven, unlevel, and downright unsightly road patching. We taxpayers, taxpayers want to hold faith in what is a short term, but we question whether this will be the final outcome once the infrastructure piping is complete.
So, that is the gas lines, and that's what Gray Supply is doing, because they're upgrading the gas lines, because the county of Ocean, who is in control of that road, notified them that they have to do the upgrades, because the county will be repaving that road possibly next year for us, and they're also repaving Lacey Road.
Next year.
It depends on when they can get the bidding and all of that out and the work done. It's up to Gray Supply to finish the work so they can put it in next year's budget.